Is that clock right? That's what I was gonna say, is I've got six, but I didn't know what time it really is, so.
Just give us a minute, I can tell them to roll tape whenever you're ready.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take a minute or so, that's fine.
I took them three times, and still. You're still, you're beautiful, but you're.
Well, the holding.
Everything is.
Pushing down your nose a little bit.
Yeah, I tried that, I tried every trick I know. We changed insurance, we had been getting through a clinic. Say, Zonkey.
We're ready? Well, good evening. I think we'll go ahead at six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the council budget meeting to order. Making sure everybody's got their chairs. And Mr. Coulson, do I go to you or to Nikki to roll, start this off?
I think we'll go to Mr. Gerber and.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure he'll quickly get that, Nikki.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. It sounds like I have my instructions, so we'll just get to this briefly and quickly. As you know from the agenda tonight, we have left this fairly open and free-flowing. We don't have a lot of specific things on here. But in a very general sense, we want to follow up from the last meeting, to circle back to any questions that the council might have in terms of what was discussed at the last meeting. And then make sure at the end of tonight that the council is very comfortable with where we are with the general fund budget, so that as we move into next Tuesday's meeting, we can focus on the other funds, including utilities and some of our risk funds. So, again, the intent tonight is to focus heavily on the general fund and get to consensus tonight that we're at the right place. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lee for her comments.
Thank you, I have nothing to add at this point.
That was brief and to the point. Well, as we continue discussing general fund items, I will remind the council, there is one item that, you know, we really are going to have to revisit, and that's the social services budget. So, you know, I opened the floor for discussion on that. I think my thoughts on that were made clear at council, that I wanted to see some funds go into the East Topeka Senior Center, as well as the Marion Clinic. So, I did visit with budget staff, and we have some dollars that we could add. There is some cushion in the budget, so that if we were to add some dollars, it doesn't affect the zero mill levy. That's, of course, something that's important to all of us, but I guess I would just open it up for discussion and see if anyone has any suggestions or comments. Yes, Mrs. Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, had some problems with the, several of the entities not getting any funds. And then in looking at those that had gotten more than they had in the past years, I wondered if there was some way we could ask the staff to figure out what, if we put those entities back at the amount that they had last year, if we would have enough funding, I didn't do the calculation, to see if the two or three that were not funded could be funded.
I'll let's, do you want to answer the question here?
Sure, and I may have Brad Reeve come up and answer, just in case I can't answer. Just to clarify, are you speaking about the agencies, just the ones that were funded at zero, or bringing all agencies back up to the 2014 funding level?
No, just the ones that were funded at zero, and then looking at those that were receiving more than they received last year. In one case, I think it was tripled what they got last year. Positive Connections, I think, got triple what they had last year. So, if we could look at that, I don't know if there's any calculations that we can do to see what that, what that funding would look like.
Well, one number I can give you very quickly is the number if we gave the agencies that are currently at zero their 2014 allocation, what that dollar amount would be. That would be about $54,000, but a big point to make is that there's one agency, and it's the Kansas Legal Services, that didn't apply last year and didn't get any funding last year, so we have no precedence for them. So if we did the 14 level for the other four agencies, it would be 54,000. But if we gave them what they requested in 15, it'd be 25,000 addition to that. And then as far as looking back towards the other agencies and what they asked in 15 versus 14, that would probably take a little bit more analysis, and a little bit more of a judgment call as far as, of the ones that asked for more. I don't know if you'd want some analysis on was there a reason they asked for more, a new program, a new service, versus just plain asking for more. We'd have to go back probably and look at their budgets, get into quite a bit of detail there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I understand the sentiment behind wanting to make sure that all of these organizations are funded, all of them do great work. I, I have an issue with, with deciding funding allocations that differ from the process that staff and the committee went through. I, I am okay with considering additions to the budget for funding allocations. I would, I would oppose just giving blanket amounts to organizations that, that didn't get funded through the process. If we want to fund the process to the point that we could fund all of those organizations, that's something that I would have no problem with. And, and in doing that, I would like to explain for the members that, for the people who weren't members of that committee, how we went through the process and how the organizations that, that got no funding came to get no funding. The first thing we did is we had 32 applications submitted. We divided those into two tiers, the top 16 scoring tiers and the bottom 16 scoring. Staff went through that process, scored them all with input from the organizations. We went through and, and analyzed every one of those score sheets, and, and analyzed and, and the committee seconded the scores that, that staff had come up with for all of those organizations. Then we went through and we, we had already had the council allocate, I think it was $407,000 for the process, and we divided that money, 75% to the highest-scoring applications, which were the Tier 1 16 organizations, 25% to the Tier 2 organizations. And then after we got through the Tier 2 organizations, when we, when we ran out of funds of that 25% of the total, those were the organizations that got zero. The organizations in Tier 2 that were funded, were funded based on their score, so if they, if they requested $10,000 and they scored 70%, they got a funding of $7,000. If we go back now and arbitrarily assign, or not arbitrarily, but if we just assign funding to organizations based on a formula other than, than that, I, I think that would be quite unfair to the organizations who scored higher, because doing what, doing that very well could entail them giving, or them actually receiving a higher amount than their application process called for. In order to fund those organizations at, the same way that all of the other organizations were, were funded, by their total requested amount, their total requested amount times the score that they got out of 100 on the application process, would require, and my number's a little bit different here, because I, I missed one of them, but I believe it was, it was about 78,000 approximately dollars, would allow us to fund every organization based on their score as compared to the amount that was requested by them. So I just think the, the, the committee of the whole might want to consider maintaining the process that we work very diligently and very hard on when we, when we decide to address the, the issues of these unfunded organizations. Thank you.
For any other, yes, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Schmidt, so if I'm understanding correctly, the five would be scored, or they'd be grant, their grant would be based on their score. I don't have those five in front of me, do you have that in front of you, the score they would be based upon?
I do have that, and it.
Yes, yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I, I do have that, and it's actually six. There are five that received no funding. The sixth organization received, the funding that they, that they would have qualified for, we didn't have enough funds left, they received what was left of the funding as the last organization to, to be funded.
Did you have follow-up, Mr. Brown?
I, I was just gonna say, I, I think maintaining fairness and sticking to the process is important, and what he's proposing, I could support.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Mrs. Heller.
Well, I, I want to support Councilman Schmidt's comments. I didn't even bring my book tonight, because there were questions that were asked, I thought that the Social Services Committee would meet again, and, and, and that if, if people on the council had questions about allocations or the process, because the council had set up a process, had delegated it to staff and committee for good, strong reasons, that, you know, really out of the, out of our last meeting, Councilman, at the council meeting where we talked about these, Councilman Schmidt said, you know, if you've got some concerns, please talk about an alternative process, because, you know, there was the six hours' worth of hearings, the whatever it was, 20 hours' worth of staff work that went into it, but also, prior to that, at the request of the council, establishing a new process. And, you know, maybe none of us, if we knew every single detail, would say that that's what we would have done personally for an allocation, but the idea was to get the process to be much more quantitative and performance-based, and to get it out of the system that we had had in prior years, where the people who called individual council people, or who showed up, got attention, and those who did not, no matter what their application said, might not get the same amount of attention. So, I am concerned about jumping outside of that process, particularly without sending it back to the committee, because we set that up to avoid exactly this happening. And I would think that everyone who set that up knew that it, there would likely be changes. And that's without personally taking a position on what happened with any of them. We did do that, and so we're at a critical point, I agree, about whether we support that system, or whether we're gonna trump it as a council, as we did before, so.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes, I just thought it went back to the committee, and I was waiting on their report, but I did have some, I was gonna send this to the committee. I did have a couple of emails, one that said that they only needed 5,000, but since the committee wasn't approving 5,000, they asked for over 5,000. And some people didn't even ask, because they were, they heard that they weren't gonna fund that. And then the lady that needed 5,000 asked for more, and then she was wondering what they were gonna do with more, so I would, I would like to see a different process, because if, you know, if they're gonna ask for more, because they feel like they're not gonna get it and ask for more, I'd sure like to try to find a process that we can accommodate those that only need a little bit to get them over the hump. But I, too, was disappointed that East Topeka didn't get any funding. When I look at CRC, who's got up before us last year and said that they don't give out a dime, but yet they got the same amount of money, and, and I understand it's gonna be like that, so just that we can find a fair process. East Topeka senior citizens, they rely on that funding to get back and forth, it's gonna shut that whole program down. At the end of the day, I guess it is a political thing, but I'm, I'm not happy with it. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I, I think, Mrs. Schwartz, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we know the exact, I know Councilman Schmidt said that he would not be against adding funds to this budget. Do we know exactly how much we would be adding, and where would that come from?
I recognize you, Mr. Coulson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, we have built into this budget a structural surplus of about $300,000 right now, based on the proposed recommendation by Councilmember Schmidt, which I believe was $78,000 to, to maintain the integrity of the process upon the action of this body. We certainly could adjust the budget to do so.
Well, I think for discussion purposes, that, I certainly wasn't trying to change the committee process, or, and I, I don't think any of us, we, we recognize the hard work that was put in, so since it, it is something that could be absorbed for, on a one-time basis until, and I don't want to rehash whether people knew what they were doing with grants, or didn't know, but for a one-time purpose, till some of the wrinkles are ironed out, maybe the following year, I would like to see us just add this additional $78,000, since it doesn't increase mill levies, it doesn't do anything to, to, you know, the budget process, so that, and it doesn't mean the committee can't still meet and, and do the things they need to do for the appeal process, or whatever, but this would allow to make sure that all those entities got funded. So that'd be my preference, but it, and, and it would be nice to take sort of a, as we're trying to work through this general fund budget tonight, and at least have some conclusion to the point that we can, so it'd be nice if we could get a consensus, or, you know, sort of a vote tally of whether or not people would be supportive of that. Yes, Mr. Brown.
Madam Chair, question, if we were to do this, would an appeals process even be necessary? Would be my question to any of the committee members.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt, and, and I, and I'm sure that Madam Chair of the committee might want to weigh in, bring her up to speed.
I was speaking, I'll just, since, since the chair of the committee just, just came in, I'll, what, what was proposed was to extend the process that we used, where we funded as a percentage of their requested amount, through the rest of the services that were either not fully funded at that amount, or got zero money, which would come to about $78,000 in addition to what we've, the 407,000 that was already allocated. That's the process, but I'll turn it over to Ms. DeLay, if she wants to comment on that.
At this point in time, should the, the body of the council feel comfortable with remaining with the percentage structure? And the staff feel that there is enough funds in the budget for us to be able to go forth with this, I wouldn't feel that there would be the need of a, of an appeal process for now, however, I do feel that we do need to establish an appeal process, so that in the future, we have a system on how to address these things as we go forth.
Mrs. Heller.
Well, I, I'm not, maybe I can ask you across the table, is your thought to simply add, if the number turns out to be 78,000, to the pool and then, and then send it back to the committee to reallocate based on formula? Or was your idea, this is Councilwoman, or Albert Hart's proposal, was your idea to fund those agencies that didn't get funded at the amount they got funded last year?
No, the idea is to follow the committee process, and they would be, and I think staff was, was able to give us the exact dollar amount for that, and so, so the suggestion is that that's what we do, because that way we're not disrupting what the committee has already done, we're just making sure for one, for one more year, those folks who didn't get funded get something. It may not be what they requested, but they're getting what they, they would have got, if we'd funded it adequately.
So, to clarify, your idea would be to put that more, that amount more in the total, and then have the, and, and send then instructions to the committee that they would reallocate, and make sure that everyone got something?
I don't think it has to, at this stage of the game, and, and I'll, I'll refer, but my intent was not for it to go back to committee, that doesn't mean the committee can't review it, but since we're trying to finalize the general fund budget tonight, if the whole, it all has to come back to council anyway, so if the whole, you know, if we here tonight agree that it's funded, I, I don't think it has to go through that two-step process. Mr. Coulson, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would, what I heard being talked here is that, is that you would add that $78,000 based on the proposal by Councilmember Schmidt, that we would, consistent with the criteria that was established in assigning the awards, assign that additional $78,000 to that, I believe it was six organizations that you made reference to. So that would finalize this discussion as it pertains to the 2015 budget. But I also heard a case that you would want to have the committee meet again to discuss how you would establish an appeals process, which I think I heard discussed would have to be established on specific findings, not just, I don't like it.
Correct.
This occurred, this occurred, this occurred, what you would qualify for, to, to be heard as an appeal, and I think that was the next step of this, of the committee, if, I, so I just tried to capture what I heard.
Yeah, I'm seeing several hands, Mrs. Heller.
If I could follow up, the, the process that the committee last year developed, that was approved by the council, assigned to the committee, the, the job of taking the priority set that was approved by the council, and making the recommendations to the council, and reporting them by June 1, that process, if you go back to that one-page sheet, continued to say that then if, if there was any change in the dollar amount that was going to be awarded to the pool, it was supposed to go back to the committee, for the committee to readjust the recommendations either down or up, based on what the council did, and then bring a revised recommendation back to the council in August. So, that was, that's the adopted procedure for the new ones. I also am concerned that if, if, the reason I asked was if it was the council's idea to give last year's allocation to the people who didn't score well enough to get anything, a lot of other agencies got cut, and so we wouldn't want to do it that way.
And we're not, that's not the suggestion. The suggestion is to follow the committee process, and, and we don't have time for it to go back to committee and come back in August, before August, because we have to have our budget approval before then.
No.
So, yeah, Mr. Schmidt.
I, I just want to simplify this, for, the, the change that is being proposed is, and this change was not involved in the origin, or this, this was not involved in the original, the original procedure that was presented to the council. We moved all organizations into Tier 1 and Tier 2, and funded Tier 1 at 75%, Tier 2 at 75%, or at 25%. What this process would do would be eliminate the two tiers, because the funding mechanism was the same for Tier 1 and Tier 2, it was just the amount of total funds available to Tier 1 and Tier 2. So, this would eliminate the two tiers, and we would fund everybody based on the scores on their application. The additional funds required to do that would be $78,000. That's what, that's what the proposal's doing, we wouldn't be changing the process in any way, or the scoring in any way, just changing, just eliminating the two-tiered system that we had to come up with in order to allocate the limited amount of resources we had.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Who would it fund, and how much?
It would fund, if we, if we can, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
If we, if we continued the funding process for the rest of them, the, the groups that would be affected would be Community Action, Latino Family Development, which was funded by committee recommendation at $6,460, that would go to $13,817. Kansas Legal Services Employment would go to $19,097. The Topeka Youth Project would get $7,400. United Way would get $17,750. East Topeka Council on Aging would get $18,872. The Marion Clinic would get $7,470, which equals out to approximately $78,000.
Can you repeat that one more time, just those figures for me? I was trying to write.
I sure can, do you need the organizations, too?
No, unless you want, it, it might be helpful, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Community Action, Latino Family Development would get a total of $13,817. That, that is, they were funded, but not fully funded at $6,460 in the recommended budget, so they would get an additional $6,000, almost $7,000. Kansas Legal Services Employment would get $19,097. The Topeka Youth Project Youth Court would get $7,400. United Way Successful Connections would get $17,750. East Topeka Council on Aging would get $18,872, and the Marion Clinic would get $7,470. And I will ask Nikki to verify those numbers, I believe those are right, that's what I have written down here.
I was verifying as you went, and that's the same thing that I came up with here.
Thank you.
For a total of?
7, 7, 9, 4, 6.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and if we could get a consensus, I don't know, maybe by how we've done this before, as a show of hands, if we are, if there is enough support to go ahead and add that 7, 7, 9, 4 into the overall budget to be processed through, if we could get that consensus, that would be helpful. I'm not sure, is that how we do it, show of hands for the?
I think last year, we actually had motions and seconds.
Oh, okay, let's do it that way. Yes, Mrs. Ortiz.
I'd make a motion that we fund the Community Action for the remainder, was that 13,817?
Would be their total, yes.
Their total. Kansas Legal at 19,970, Topeka Youth Court at 7,400, United Way at 17,750, East Topeka at $18,072, Marion Clinic at 7,470, for a total of 77,946, not to total any more or less. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Schmidt.
Can I just offer, I think it was just a transposing, when you read that, but the numbers you read for Kansas Legal Services and for East Topeka Council on Aging were wrong, the number was 19,0097?
0, 9, 7?
Yeah, I think you said 970.
Well, that sounds like a better number.
And 18,872 for East Topeka Council on Aging, which is a total of 77,946.
And is there a, are you seconding the motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
You make that motion, and are, were you seconding, Mr. Schmidt?
I will second that motion.
With the caveat that this is a one-time.
Okay, any comments? I would just simply say I'm gonna support this, because I believe in the one-time window to make sure that the grant process can be a little, maybe any wrinkles can be ironed out for next time, and I appreciate the hard work of the committee, and because this doesn't alter the budget, being a zero-mill levy budget, I can support this, and so I encourage my fellow council members to do that. So, all in favor? Did you have a comment, Mrs. Heller?
I had a question.
Okay.
That's when I raised my hand.
Finish the vote.
Let's finish the vote, do we have a total on the vote? Okay, and, Mrs. Heller.
My question was whether there was, we were expecting a corresponding motion to adopt the rest of the committee's recommendation. We haven't adopted that.
Well, I'm not sure that at this stage of the game, it'll be the committee recommendation, but it would be adopting the budget as proposed with this number, but I'll let Mr. Coulson or the budget staff clarify that for me.
Yeah, I'd like to go to the senior, the answer's just, but.
Yeah. Yes, you're adopting the total number, not, the allocations that were discussed come out to that 78,000, and the total number for the budget.
So, so by doing this, if you could read back to us what we now have, what will be in the social service budget, because you'll, you'll be amending this budget document to reflect what our action just was, so what's the total number? I, I should be able to add it, but I don't have a calculator. The total, the social ser-
Not total by agency, but the total, total.
Just the total, so we all know what the social service budget is now.
The amount from CDBG remains the same, at 134,999, and the general fund is 5,74946.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional comment, or should we move on, and I'll open it up to other questions, if anybody had any questions or concerns about any of the other items in the general fund? Mr. Coulson.
Thank you, I, and I, I should have probably made some comments at, at the beginning of this, just in terms of establishing people's expectations, there've been a lot of positive comments and questions that have come from members of, of this body as to where are we in the process? This is a significantly abbreviated process as compared to last year, and that was based on a lot of things, mostly comments that were received by the-
on a lot of things, mostly comments that were received by the, by my staff from various members of this council in terms of what they thought was effective, what they didn't. Our objective really was quite simple, was to bring forward to you the two thousand and fifteen budget based on increasing the two thousand and fourteen budget based on contractual obligations and other things that we thought were beneficial to the city, and then identifying what the gap was, and then identifying cuts necessary, decreases in the budget to achieve that, and that's what's been brought forward to you. I, I, I think that there has been questions about are the departments going to come up and make presentations? For the most part, I, I'm not going to comment as to whether you want to see that, whether you didn't want to see that. Our belief was that it was better this year, given the fact that, that where we're at in the budget process, to just bring the departments up to discuss the impacts of the changes, whether it, whether it be an increase or a decrease in the two thousand and fifteen budget, which is what we did on Saturday. We do stand available to address any questions that may come forward. We understand that we may not have the answers today, we'll bring them back, but it is our hope that by the end of these three meetings, this being the second of the three, that we would be in a position to address any questions, but, but come back on July fifteen with the final budget, and, and have that, and a body, this body take an official action, understanding that all that we can do today is propose to the, to the, to the body, to the council, the recommendations of the city in the whole, if that, if that makes sense.
Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Ortiz?
I just want to thank the committee for the social services. That's never easy, and I realize that, and thank you for the hard work, and for staff for the hard work. And, and I am already looking at different ways to present to the committee, different, you know, appeals and stuff like that, because I'm very concerned when, when, and I'll send you guys those emails that I received, when people say that they only need a limited amount of money and they're asking for more, that concerns me, that really concerns me, because I know some of these services could use a lot more, not just what's, what we have here, but there's some out there, and just that three thousand or two thousand might, might get them through the hump. And again, I'm very, very concerned, I've said this ti, for eight years now, maybe nine years, what about the new guy that's coming in? You know, because things are getting harder out there, and more people are looking for grants, so, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for standing up for the Topeka's, East Topeka senior citizens, I appreciate that.
Any other, anything dealing with any departments, or anything else with the general fund budget questions, or did, was there any submitted to you that you need to do follow-up on? I guess I should ask the budget team.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. There were a few meetings that came up in Saturday, or a few questions that came up in Saturday's meeting that we were going to send you some information on. For the most part, we felt like it was something that maybe you didn't need before tonight, it was relatively minor, for example, how do we pay the Topeka Performing Arts Center utility bills, and what percentage is that based on? Also, there was a couple of questions on, a couple of the lights on Seventeenth Street, and a couple of questions about Westar tariffs that we pay, which we're definitely going to follow up with you on. Our plan is to follow up with you in one big document, which will be sent to you before the next budget committee meeting, and also available online, so any questions that came up from Saturday, and also come up from tonight, we'll capture in one document with all of the follow-up. But I have not received any direct questions for information that you all needed to prepare for tonight, that I have got responses ready for.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Man Speaker?
Yeah, I have a question. I was just looking through the book, and I'm trying to find where code enforcement lawn cutting is, what the budget line item is for that.
Code enforcement is included in the police budget, let me find that for you. If you go to page eighty-six, code enforcement is included in the Community Service Division in the Police Department. As far as a breakout for specific costs, I might ask the representative to come out if perhaps Captain Scott has a specific answer to this, or maybe it's something we need to follow back up on.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, ma'am, and counsel, Councilman Man Speaker. May I, your question again is, do we have the breakout of the line item?
Yeah.
It's under Community Services in the, well, she pointed out in page six, we donate, the, that goes, that's about sixty, what is it exactly, in case sixty-three? No, it's okay.
Yes, Mr. Coulson.
Deputy Mayor, Councilman Man Speaker, let us get back to you on that, as opposed to making numbers up.
If I, if I may, my, my issue is that, and I know that there's reasons why the grass isn't cutting right now, but I'm hearing from constituents about tall grass, and I think we, as a city, are doing everything we can within our, our powers to fix tall lawns, but we can't keep up with how many there are. And so my concern is that if there's not enough funding to keep up with what we have right now, do we need to increase that line item so that we're able to do a little bit more than what we're doing right now?
Yes, Mr. Coulson.
Deputy Mayor, Councilman Man Speaker, well, we, we agree with that. I don't think we want to concede to that too quick, like, I'm, I'm not ignoring the issue, but I think for this, for us to do, to do what we truly want to do, we need to get the volunteer program working and have people respond, because we can't continue to fill the resources that have people not doing their job, but we understand their responsibility, but we do understand that there are people who can't do it, and, and we need to differentiate the cans and the loans budget. I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not opposed to doing that, I just think we would continue to chase our tail if we're not, if we're not strategic in the way we approach this.
Mr. Man Speaker?
I, I appreciate that, specifically the properties I'm talking about right now. Nobody lives there. They're vacant lots, or they're, the bank owns the property, or something like that. A volunteer program is one thing, but when you drive through an improved part of our city and the grass is three feet high, I think that says something about the community as, at large. If, I realize we don't always get our funds back when we go out in most somebody's yard, but the reality is that we can lean on their house to get those funds back over a period of time, so the, if, if we have to spend more upfront to get the grass and, and things under control, and that's what I want to do, not wait to see if we can get some volunteers to help us with it, because that doesn't solve the problem. The problem for me right now is immediate, I'm getting contacted daily about it, so...
Deputy Mayor, Councilman Man Speaker, I, I agree. Do, do we have a solution at this point, or do you want to come back?
At this point, yeah, we probably need to, we, we are looking at alternatives and ways to do that, and, right now, just to, one of the things that you're going to get as a council is the number of properties that are being mowed in the future. We've, up to date, we've had about a hundred and fifty-two lawns mowed, we have several crews that are out there doing it, we, just so the council understands where that mowing comes from, it's from inmate crews that go out, and as they go out and do the mowing, they're also inhibited from mowing from the rain days, we've had a lot of rain this year, so they can't mow during those days. That throws them back. We have other things that the crews do also, such as the takeover makeover, they were busy, two extra days on that, that held them back. Right now, we're probably sitting in about two weeks in arrears where we should be on mowing. However, when some of the issues that have popped up recently because of the fall behind, we're looking at how that lawn mowing list comes out, and that we're reorganizing the priority list, because what I was doing before was just generating a list, the crews would get it and they would just send out into a geographical area. Well, there's other things that we can be looking at to get the lawns, the, the areas mowed that need to be mowed more quickly. Not always do we need to stick to that process, that's what we're, we're looking at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ortiz?
Thank you. So, in the two thousand and fifteen budget, is there money for the inmate crews? How much have we budgeted for that?
Yes, we, three hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Where's that at? What page?
On page thirty-three. Of your, your master, your big book. And it's...
Oh, right here.
If you'd like a little bit of background for the inmate crew and how that's funded.
Thirty, thirty-three.
I, I just don't want to end up like the county, and I don't know, Chad, if these are county properties next to you, I, I've been turning in properties that belong to the county, and what the county did is they cut out their inmate crew out of their budget this year, so they didn't have anybody to cut these grasses, so as we turned in the property, it went through the same thing as, the same procedure as the, as any, any other individual, because they're the owners of that property, so they had, would however many days to cut it, or they would get the fine that a normal person would get. Well, I have some properties around my area that the county owns, I don't know, Ginny, do you know if the county or the city ever got it cut, or who got it cut, but it was, okay, it was right at the timeline, really, really close to the timeline, so I just don't want us to go through the same thing that they went through, and now they're scrambling to try to get all these yards cut, when they see that big hefty fine of five hundred dollars come through. And I tell you what, I took a picture of it, it was, it was almost chest-high, and it's crappy when they cut it. The inmates do a great job, they go around and trim the edges, so that's why I'm asking to make sure that we continue this program, so that we, we get our bang for our buck. Plus, not only that, when the inmates cut that, we could go through in child support and collect whatever arrears or fees that they need to, to pay, so it's a, it's a two-fold, it's a two-fold, so I just wanted to make sure that that was in there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Any further, yes, Mr. Man Speaker?
Yeah, why, I would be interested in knowing why Streets funds the inmate program.
I can explain a little bit. It's housed in the Streets program, and for the most part, it's because a lot of what they do relates to the Streets division, however, Streets definitely does not fund the whole program, that's simply where we show it housed at a funding level. A certain amount of their funding comes from the state, but then also a certain amount of funding comes from whatever departments they're doing work for, for example, the Police Department forwards some revenues into the program because they're doing some work for the Police Department, the Streets Division pays for some of those services, so it's really, the revenue is allocated out to the departments that are benefiting from the services, and it's, we've put it, we've included it with the Streets fund budget for the reason that I said, is that a lot of what they do, there's a lot of overlap, but it's actually funded through several different areas, and it's actually operated out of the H and D departments, this is truly a cross-departmental function that really you could show in really several different places.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Man Speaker?
So, is, when you say it's funded by the Streets Fund, several different projects, is part of that motor fuel tax?
Uh, the Streets Fund is a hundred percent funded by motor fuel.
So, we're funding the people who might potentially mow yards because of code issues with motor fuel tax?
A, a small portion of that, of the inmate program would be funded through the Streets Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Scott?
Just, and also, Kansas Department of Transportation is the source for funding our supervisor, which monitors all the, the street, the inmate crews. Rhonda Clemmons, she's the one that goes out and makes sure that they get, done what they've done. We have to use Department of Correction employees to actually go out and supervise the inmate crews out there on the street, so we have also Blythe money that comes from block grant money, and then, of course, we do an interdepartment funding source simply to, because it, it doesn't affect all the departments in the city, on many occasions, whether the, the Street Department gets the complaint, or H and D gets a complaint, or Code, Property Maintenance gets a complaint.
Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Hiller?
Well, I had a few, I, I, I had some questions on Saturday, I followed up a little bit with Nikki today, and I, I really do appreciate that. One of the questions I'd asked was about staffing, and Nikki told me that she could actually, that the nine-point-five that they talked about on Saturday is new employees, but we don't really, she has told me she could give us all an accounting of how many new employees we have and where they are, but also any positions that have been deleted, so that we can see, and that, that in the future, we'd probably have a four-year bar on our departmental reports like we've had in the past, so we could see what the total personnel had been, you know, in prior years and current year, and what was coming up. So, I'm looking forward to that, and wanted to let everybody know it was, it was coming. We also had talked about the issues of the gas franchise fee being in the budget, and maybe Nikki could react to that?
Mr. Coulson?
I am not aware that there's a gas, I mean, and, are you talking about an increase in the gas franchise fee?
Well, we had voted on an increase in the fee, and, and it apparently isn't yet coming in, and so discussing that, and then, if it does come in, the issue of our gasoline costs.
Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Hiller, as I stated on Saturday, there was, there was a proposal at the beginning of last year's budget process to, to...
I wasn't here, I followed up with her.
Last year, a year ago, when we had the budget process, there was a discussion about, and a desire to increase from five percent to six percent the electric and the, and the gas, that as we went into the adoption of the budget process, I started the meeting by stating that Kansas Gas had stated they were not in a position at that particular time to increase that, didn't reflect that in the budget, but we did negotiate with, with Westar Electric to initiate their increase in the fee much earlier in the process, at the beginning of the budget season, as opposed to the end of the budget season, so we reflected that in the final number, so I, and I, and as I stated during the meeting on Saturday, and I understand you might not have been here, it's very important that we don't state that Kansas Gas hasn't delivered on something, they were very clear that they were not going to, while we believe that the door may be open to have a conversation with them going forward, that, that has not occurred at this particular point, so I don't want to in any way make a statement that will cause my phone to ring when this meeting ends by, you know, Kansas Gas, so, I just wanted to clarify that issue.
Thank you.
Sorry, I jumped off that girl quick, I wanted to be careful there.
Well, I, fine.
Anything, any other questions?
I, I have some others when there's time.
I don't see any other hands, proceed.
I had asked a question about the electric bill, council members picked up on the energy conservation issues, and I thought that maybe people were going to just have a check on that, the fact that it had increased.
Mr. Coulson? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure we caught that from Saturday, we have, as recently as this afternoon, already started having discussions about how we can do a better job in focusing, focusing our energy conservation policy and what might be available in terms of, you know, grants or other resources, and, and where that function might best lie, so we started those conversations again this afternoon, but we certainly didn't circle around to any sort of bill increases.
And I wouldn't think an increase, just whether there was any idea how come it went up, and whether we should... Sounds like you're starting to address it.
Mrs. Hiller, can you, I'm not sure I'm even understanding what, what number you're talking about, you're talking about from page eight?
From page eight.
Electricity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're talking about the increase of eighty-three thousand?
Yes.
That's reflected on page eight?
Yes.
Okay. I don't recall if there was an answer to that question on Saturday, or if you have an answer now, or if that's just simply looking at increasing costs that everyone sees, I'm not sure what that was.
Deputy Mayor and Council, if I can just address that, what we did in terms of anticipating what the expenses of ongoing operational expenses would be, we looked at trends, we looked at what's happening within the industries, we came back based on, on the model that we're using, which I think is a very good one, the best guesses we can as to what the costs are going to be during the two thousand and fifteen budget, understanding that of course the ball isn't that good, and we're trying to, to do the best that we can. That's the first part of the question, I don't think that, that we can't give you an exact answer, but we're giving one based on the best estimates that we can make, based on information that's available from the industries and trends analysis and, and other things. I think the more important question is, what do we do about the fact that we own a lot of facilities, and many of them are very old and have controls and lights and others that are, are, are not the best available technologies? As Mr. Whitaker came forward on, on Saturday, once again, I don't remember whether you were here or not, he talked about some of the changes that we're making in terms of switching out the light bulbs from, to a much more higher level of efficiency, there was a question about the Johnson controls analysis and what that meant, I had the joy of going through that contract, and if I had hair, it would have been standing up because it wasn't one that was in, that was pretty funny, that was, it wasn't to the benefit of the city, in fact, it had a lot of risks to the city, so we decided to move on into a different direction. We've looked at various models, but when we talk about deferred compensation and longer-term investments on the part of the city specifically, it would be able to... efficiency. There was a question about the Johnson controls analysis and what that meant. I had the joy of going through that contract. And if I had hair, it would have been standing up because it wasn't one that was in, that was pretty funny. That was, it wasn't to the benefit of the city. In fact, it had a lot of risks to the city. So, we decided to move on into a different direction. We've looked at various models, but when we talk about deferred compensation and longer-term investments on the part of the city specifically as it deals with fleets and facilities, we don't have the answers yet. We have more questions than answers, but we understand that there's a significant benefit to us if we are able to implement some of these things. We're just not there yet. And I don't know when we'll be there. We'll be there when we have the right answers. But when we're talking about these fixes, we're talking about millions of dollars that would have to be probably brought forward in, as, as a potential indebted, long-term indebtedness. We're trying to do everything we can out of cash to improve our situation, but we don't have those answers yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?